I think it's time for me to go. What does hem DNA mean? It was strictly...
Hem DNA means...
I think I need more context. And then there's something else.
When you're done with the interview, I'll come down here.
So first time it appears. You sure? And then, no, sure. It's management, it's management, like...
Well, we'll see. There you go. So you gave an opening there.
So here's what's the other one that you don't know?
Because that's a speed table versus a speed bump.
Okay, that we know of. Oh, that's for sure. Because they don't go anywhere. Yes.
Actually, no, empty. I read financial reports of corporations.
This is my... The fast you go, unless you feel it, just don't. If you go slower, as people can get out. That's why I prefer a speed table because it's longer. The fault is...
As a thing of appropriations, positive appropriations. That doesn't make sense.
Saying fast, you know, right? It always goes, "How fast do you go?" Unless you're... Because when you go slower, then you get the whole stop or spin it.
And we took apart. Has he got this information? Here, just take them both. I don't know.
All right, Michael, what did you want?
I needed Carol.
Three minutes. Get away to the car. Oh, wow. Hi. This is a surprise. So how are things camp? You having a good time?
Camp is fine. I helped out so much.
What happened?
The fire department just left.
Are you...
That was you?
No, yes.
Oh, God.
Yes. I'm okay. I have families up there. Yes. Yeah, that's what... It was an overheated fan in my bathroom. So it was smoking. And then I lost all my power.
That one's all set.
It's all set. I took it out. Happy's on his way home. Well, no, I came home for this.
We're doing by the end of meeting anyway.
Hey, you're here. Man. Good news for this. I want to say, "Sorry, I didn't discuss this." I swear it seems tight. I was picking up my dinner.
Yes. I was picking up mine.
Okay, everybody. It's now 6:30. So a call to order the SLAB board meeting of Monday, July 30. And we'll start with approval minutes of July 23. So are we ready to go with them? Michael?
They were good.
Okay. By consensus, yeah. By consensus, the minutes have been approved. Our tax collector is going to be here at 6:30. Or did that get rescheduled?
That's right.
Which is what, August 6? All right. Community input? Yes.
Shall I do it?
Absolutely. No, sorry.
Well, Tuesdays, actually. The first thing is I want to thank you for having served on this SLAB board for the years that you've had. Which is, that's a big thing, gentlemen, for when you've been there and you move this. First, a big thing to have to say.
It's very sweet. And I have pains and guilt, but it's what's best for me. And it's, well, it's...
Things change and things change. So that's fine. But I just wanted to thank you again.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
The other thing is, as you know, I've been chairing manager meeting. And we have prepared a report. And we prepared a report that was... We didn't, we weren't able to through our road agent because of time constraints. I just spoke to him and said that if he wanted to...
Oh, in your interview process?
Right. If he wanted, because things were happening and somebody couldn't do something. And so I said, "I'll do it." And then we just ran out of time. So I have spoken with George. And he said that if I really wanted to, I still could. And I could do an insert in the report where instead of anybody to talk to him about, you know, what he's thought about, if he could certainly be asked from him. The other thing I would ask, is if it's possible, would I like to have permission to perhaps have a time later this month sometime, or very first part of September, to have a hearing where we could present it to the public? Perhaps in a summary form, as you can well understand? If that would be all right? And I won't know the exact date, but I'd like to prepare a summary. And then perhaps have a hearing or something like that. Then we could just present it to the people, whether it be just before one of these meetings or something like that. And maybe if we have time to put together a PowerPoint for the town.
No, that's all...
A PowerPoint. If Denise will help. I mean, she can help with that part because I'm not a PowerPoint expert.
She's really got a... I know she is. She's a decent PowerPoint person, but I'm stepping away.
Yeah.
I think an informational session would be very helpful. And then if the board wants to look forward or recommendations, and we're going to do a public hearing, I would say.
Right.
So even the information session would be hosted by the board, don't you think? And then you would be scaled. So we'll let the existing board decide.
Would never be. I just, first, I have to get the summary done and make with deep through the PowerPoint part in...
I think it would be helpful.
We'll let you know as soon as we can pull that together.
Do you think maybe September is a good time to do it? Let's pick your chance.
If we can sneak it in the end of August, it would be good. But let's just see how fast we can move forward. Because I know everybody has other things going on.
And I know that Michael is hoping to get an ordinance. I'll be curious, is that still on the docket?
It is.
For when would that be?
The 20th.
It would be after that. If that's, if that's okay. You mean an ordinance regarding this? No.
No, no, no. It's a transpiration ordinance. It's a possible amendment.
Okay. But those are my questions. So, Ed, that's all I'm...
So you have nothing for us tonight. You're still in process.
Right, exactly. But I just wanted to let you know. The actual report is available. And it's already been given. And I would ask that the report itself be posted next.
Oh, where is the report?
I emailed you.
Well, we all got it electronic.
Wow.
Friday.
Friday.
Oh, goodness.
This is a printed copy.
Yeah, no, I don't need a printed copy.
I don't think you want a printed copy.
Right. Well, thank you all.
So I just wanted to let you know, and as I say, a summary might be helpful because this is 47 pages.
So the date on that was like 7/27?
Yes.
All right, thank you very much. I appreciate the time that you and your committee have given to this. And I look forward to reading it, even though I'm going to be active on it. I've still been very interested.
Thank you very much.
All right. Any other interview input?
Tried to get ahead of Lorraine, but she was quicker to put her hand up than I was. We have some folks that need to notice a lot of things and come back. Right, Tuesday. If you'd like to stand up, please. I know. It has to be done.
It doesn't have to be done.
Well, it should be done. So on behalf of Denise and I, we wanted to say thank you for your service at the town, especially as chair. And before you became chair, you certainly did more than all the rest of us anyways. But as soon as you became chair, you certainly did even more. Continue, you know. And it hasn't gone unnoticed. We want to say thank you. You will be missed, but you will not go far. So ask someone yourself why you're there. Please don't skip it. There you are. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And all the departments you wanted to come in. I don't love, the fire chief is probably Denise's...
Although, he's always gone, but he...
Mark was coming, we both were thinking so.
Sorry, you're welcome.
Thanks, everybody. I really appreciate it. And as you know, as I think I've already said, it's sort of bittersweet. And therefore, it is time. I personally need to not be here under the kinds of stress and all those other kinds of things that we're just doing very much good these days. So that's what it does. But it has been, many parts of it have been satisfied. I don't know that I can say most of it. Many parts have been satisfied. So thank you for this, and I appreciate it. All right, shall we go on?
No more.
I think the town clerk's here.
And...
And if she has...
The tax collector.
Tax collector. I would like to speak on the residence and the inventory. I think there's a lot of information on that besides the revenue. And I think we should keep them both.
The town clerk was just here first, and that's all.
I think the tax collector's not speaking with us.
Okay, I thought that was...
I would just say, what information do you think we have gleaned from those tax...
Well, residence tax tells you the people at 18 to 64. And the inventory tells you everybody in town who lives here.
And you think those are the only ways that we can get that information?
No. But it's accurate.
But it's not used.
It's not used. They're five.
I don't know why it shouldn't be. That's why it being...
Well, we'll have that discussion. And also, just by way of information, apparently there are only two towns in the state of New Hampshire that still do resident taxes. We are one of two. All right. Department, I think it was Walpole. Ask Andrea, she knows when she's here.
Presentation next one.
Yeah, it should be good. Okay. Department heads? You see?
Let's see if she's coming back in half an hour. Oh, mustn't I?
I'm here till 7:00 in the west.
Hi, George.
Good evening. It could be quote for the PowerPoint.
And... Uh-oh. Oh, okay. It's barely within the SMF.
And actually, if you read it, it may be less than that. It's just, nobody's going to run into it. I got a second quote, which could just a little higher than that, but I think...
Is it your lowest?
That's the lowest bid.
All right, so... All right, so tonight, we were going, we said that if you had the documents, we would consider the proposal from Atlantic Recycling, the purchase order, and then the electric. So I had done an estimate based, if you remember, electrical of 5,000.
Yeah.
Be closer.
We were hoping to do, if we're doing other digging, we're going to have ready. I settled them.
I'll give spelling lessons on videos. There's an editorial comment to my favorite other board person.
Now, you have the copy, the original bit, right?
I don't know. I was hoping that it was... Do we have it in there? Atlantic Recycling?
Seventeen seventy. I know I could do it.
Yes, you did try to do it once, but we couldn't find it last week. So we were hoping that everything would be...
I did not move anything from that file.
Yeah, I'm not sure it's here.
So I don't know where it would be. George, is it in an email?
George may have given it to us. We may have walked away with individual copies, so...
I think that might have been...
Yes.
I did give everybody a copy.
So that's...
Yes, no. I absolutely did. And we shout out to... Do you want to check?
No, it's not in here.
No, I know, because last week...
And so we had, yeah, I think we took an individual copy.
You see, you should never give us individual copies. I know it's true for me, but apparently, this case was also true for my colleagues. So we're looking at the electrical. We're looking at a contract proposal. And is there a purchaser associated with it?
Well, it's going to be the purchaser to the... Because it's... So I have to do the... So I get... I have a purchaser, he has to allow me.
Oh, okay.
And which way you want to do it.
So this has to be done before you do your Slab? Or how does this fit in?
We have to do a Slab.
You're doing a Slab.
We're doing a Slab. That's going to be done for us when we get...
That's going to be done for us then, I suppose.
And they'll be working, the electrical...
This is the... This is the trading. So it's not the...
He didn't give us a copy of the contract. That was the information he gave us.
So this is the financing. These are the financing figures. Doesn't describe the bailer.
I have the smaller bailer, but I don't have a big one. He's just... That's what he has.
No, I understand.
Send them in.
Well, it's not just the, here, we've got the bottom line. We're just trying to figure out the best way to manage that. If you do a purchase order to Atlantic Recycling and cite the refurbished bailer as described in the meeting of two weeks ago, then...
He's actually already spent the work on it to get it ready, so...
The what, the contract proposal?
No.
The bail...
He's down there getting the stuff ready for that.
All right. So minimum, I guess what we need is a purchase order to Atlantic Recycling. So if you want to work on that, then we can, we can... We'll need a purchase order for Mr. Electric for 4850.
You have to figure for...
For Atlantic, yes. Seventeen thousand seven hundred, right?
Seventeen...
But you want to do the, whether you want the purchase order to the full amount? Whether you want to do that purchase agreement? How do you want to do that?
Oh, I see what you mean. Yes, we're not authorizing seventeen thousand seven hundred.
No.
So we are authorizing... A rental agreement for...
Six, seven, eight.
It was...
Seven fifty-six, probably.
Yeah. Is that what it is?
Seven fifty. For the bigger bail.
With the understanding that dependent upon funding for Town Meeting.
That's correct.
So there are two figures here.
The bigger figure. July bail, seven fifty, seven fifty.
Seven fifty-six? Can you multiply it by four and see what you get? To see if... I don't have a... Three thousand...
That's three thousand?
Thirty-six.
Three thousand twenty-four hundred.
I'll leave twenty-four. I don't have my phone with me. I have a zip code. Does anybody have the budget revisions that I sent to you?
Yeah.
So bailer rental for FY '18 are based on 850 a month for four months. See, it's the short rental program. Yeah, see, it's this one.
Seven months. At 850 per month, it's balanced due for 119 of 11,750. This one's a quote, not including maintenance or PM program. Town will be responsible for all maintenance repairs and parts.
That's my budget. So it would be 850 a month for four months is $3,400.
Rent to own, we were doing the rent to own.
Yes. Yes, so we would be paying $3,400 in FY '18 for rental. We would be paying $2,550 in FY '19 for rental for the first two months. And then, if all goes well, with Town Meeting, 11,750 in the remainder. Yes.
I'm just going to do that because there are two dollar amounts for the short, to rent to own program.
I think those have interest.
Okay. But this is just a short-term rental?
This is the short term to get us through next April.
Okay. But does that apply to the purchase price? It doesn't indicate here, so...
No interest, no money to...
No interest.
I remember that in the presentation. I just want to make sure this is exactly what we really are signing up for. That's all.
So what the PO should say is it should be for $3,400 for four months of bailer rental via L E R. With, I'm not done.
Rental.
With the understanding that an additional three months of rent and 850 per month will be paid from January through March.
Which means an additional...
Eight hundred and fifty per month rental will be paid from January through March. And a final payment pending approval at Town Meeting of $11,750. Seven hundred and fifty. At which point, the town will fully own the bailer. If you could show that to Todd and have him initial that? That would be helpful. Otherwise, we need to come back to John.
Okay. Okay. Thirty-four hundred rental for four months.
So that's on to the bottom line of PO, $3,400. But the rest of that is, because there's no contract holes really for us, then we have to put it there. And I would appreciate him signing off on that.
But you will pay him in January, February, in March?
Yes, that's also the...
Yeah, okay. Even though it's not part of the original dollar amount, it is mean we are going to pay them and then...
Right, we're just... So Caroline, I mean... So the 3,400 FY '18. So we're going to continue because, I'll just say we. Because the board, you know, even though it's a budget year, we will be continuing those payments for the first three months. Will we need another purchase order? Well, is it, what? We can't up this by the rental amount because Todd will not buy that here. That's the right thing. So we're just going to do FY '18. Then come January, we'll, you'll, somebody will...
Then there will be a new set of paperwork.
Yeah.
However, it is workable if there is one contract that stipulates how the money works through both years. Then once that's signed, you know, I would still do, you know, there would still be payments in '19, but it could reference that same...
All right, so we'll take care of this. And if that's sufficient for January through March, great. Todd really needs to sign off on that.
Yes.
And I'm going to say, otherwise, it has to come back and forth. That PO will be more involved. Is everybody really okay with that? All right, so... Do you mind if I move it? Because I'm reading it, because I want to read it anyway. So I moved purchase order 1387 to Atlantic Recycling Equipment for one reconditioned bailer... One reconditioned bailer rental for four months. The understanding of an additional four months at, I'm going to start it again once I get this. At 800, or is it 850 a month? So, purchase order 1387 to Atlantic Recycling for one reconditioned bailer rental at 850 dollars a month for four months for a total of $3,400. With the understanding that there will be an additional 850 dollars a month rental from January to March. And with the understanding that there will be a final payment of $11,750 in April upon approval at Town Meeting. At which point, the town will own the bailer. I just moved that. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second for Denise.
Any other comments or questions?
All right, so Todd will sign this. If he doesn't sign it...
Not set up to.
Go on with anything else.
You want to sign it too, right?
I will call, well, I'm signing. Who's signing?
Oh, he doesn't have to sign. That's important to know.
Ready to call a question? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, there's bailer rental.
Mr. Electric? I'd like to work with a couple of bailers if it comes to that.
All right, let's hand that to Mike.
We've got to have two regardless.
So...
With the rental.
Oh, no, I mean, if they, if he doesn't sign that...
Okay, got it.
Then everything stops.
Okay. All right, so I'm going to give you, so you can reference, maybe say per attached. Maybe we can add to that per attached busy.
Seven twenty-four?
Yes.
Okay, I moved purchase order number 1388 to Mr. Electric for electrical work to the bailer for the attached email of 72718 in the amount of $4,850.
Any comments or questions? Those that can ever say aye?
Aye.
I don't know why I moved it behind me. Ask any questions or comments because this is to you. Really, it's time for me to go. Okay, there you go, George. Yeah, they should be attached, please.
How do you want to, you know, one PO for the cement and why they mesh for the pad?
Is it the same vendor? Purchase order?
I can probably get it from the same vendor.
Purchase orders to a vendor. So talk to us about what you're trying to do, and I will sort of maybe figure it out.
They told us the cement was going to be about 450, but we would have to buy the wire mesh separately. And that was going to be roughly around $100, but we're going to get it over here twice.
So you can do that with your credit card?
Okay, so I'll do that. And then the lumber for making the frame is going to be ready.
And you have a credit card too?
I'm going to put them. Like $100 for concrete, that and concrete, sand for...
Yeah, I put six...
They were, they were $200 more dollars plus than any other company I've been in.
So.
That can be, be all done and they're going to be dumping it.
Yeah, yeah, I'll come by. I'll put up to five hundred.
Just put five hundred, that means you're authorized for that, for up to five hundred.
Motion for purchase out of fourteen twenty-six have been concrete for concrete to pad for the transfer station.
A second.
Sorry, second.
Any questions or comments? All those that gave a say aye?
Aye.
And I'm just going to add for Baylor, just to make it clear on that. Okay, concrete.
And this is for these small Baylor, I'm not going to give a PO, I just say that he's buying it from us. So that explains the whole thing, so he wanted to go and say, oh.
Oh, I see.
When it's setting down.
Are you a small one, he can take out at whatever?
So this is a quote to purchase the small cramalot, that's a nice name for a Baylor. Cramalot vertical Baylor from the town of Broadensford has his for five hundred dollars. Payment terms thirty days, so Michael, do you want to move that?
Move that we authorize the sale of the, was it cramalot? Cramalot vertical Baylor at the transfer station to Atlantic Recycling for five hundred dollars.
Do you want more questions?
Have a question, um, is it, you're not physically going to receive the five hundred, is it just going to be netting with the, with the other invoice, or?
How about, you said he'd write you a check, so I don't know.
Okay, I don't know what the procedure is.
I don't know how that would work, so.
Yeah, Caroline, is there, is there an issue either way?
There's no issue either way, however, if the rental were to go down by five hundred dollars, that would reduce your outlay. And then there would be no income, and that's fine, it would give you more budget flexibility. But the net effect is the same.
Yeah, it would be nice to have, it would be nice to have the revenue actually, only because of she's, and that way we, it would be an actual grid spending.
Either way.
I think we should accept it.
All right, so I think it, it's on the floor, right, because you just asked a question. Any other comments or questions? All those that gave a say aye?
Aye.
The Sligo Road culvert, I, uh, apparently we're in, we had this weekend at work, but it didn't get into the second culvert, so we still get losing work between that old. Want to go with that first, but.
That was a lot of rain.
Yes, it did come up to the second culvert, but it didn't go over the road.
Which it would have before.
Oh my God, yes, yeah.
I need to, uh, open that up some more, see what's under there, because we haven't had a chance to do that yet, so.
Is that the Boulder that you're referring?
Of that, that bottom culvert, that bottom, like, we can get that open, that wide open, then that'll definitely eliminate. But I have some other paving projects, I don't know what you wanted to do, you wanted to wait to save the money for that? Before we jump on these, I know there's one spot even makes sure that's got to be fixed by the steward. The hot top broke up in the dirt and trip has it, oh, nine yards. Whether I can fix that one and the sidewalk on Stockdale. That's not going to be a lot of dollars, but it's, uh, Stockdale's about five, six hundred dollars to fix that sidewalk. And Locust and Main is going to be, not Locust and Main, but Main and Third is going to be about six hundred and forty dollars.
So we have spent just about three hundred thousand, we have three hundred and twenty-five thousand. Regarding to the culvert, we have a culvert fund that has ten thousand dollars in it. The board has agency to spend from that, so if we were to incur expenses during this fiscal year, we can pay for them this fiscal year with that culvert, with that culvert fund. So do you, so the question then is, do you think it's going to go over ten thousand? So, by how much?
I haven't figured what to repair the wall part of it, and if we don't dig it up, we get it opened up, we don't have to do that issue. We can look forward down to next year and then plan on it. According, have it looked at and see what we need for the wall, and sure, on the other side.
Does that then go away?
No, no, it doesn't go away, and I won't be here, but I would recommend that we continue to add to the culvert.
But I want, I want to actually, you know, I want to see what, if, if the ceiling one is okay, then there's no sense digging it up this year, and then we can re-well it up along, if I can open that up.
Do you think the, uh, activity of the last few weeks, once we've done what we've done?
Has it proven?
Yeah, it's telling us that we maybe have some time to defer?
I, it's absolutely approved, it's mean the water's going through now, the water didn't go up over the road with the amount of rain we had. And it's going, and there's no buildup of water now, which like, there was three or four feet always coming over the.
And we've had to close the road because of that, right?
And there's no water, there's no water going over there.
So, but he's talking about two different projects, so he's talking about paving projects and he's talking about the culvert. The culvert money can only be used for culvert.
Right, but that's.
But the little fear that it might be of a town.
If we had to dig that road up, it's not going to be just culvert, we have to pave that road.
Oh, it's paving, oh, you have to dig up the road to fix the culvert?
Yeah, if we have to fix the top, that culvert, the granite.
Oh, okay, I understand.
That's why I was, that's why I didn't want to rush into, you know, using the paving money yet before we found out exactly what's going on.
So just to be clear, if, if the culvert preparation, including the final paving over, if we did that, can all be paid for the culvert fund if there's ten thousand dollars? My question was, is, is, are we apt to go over that?
Yeah.
Then that would come into this.
And depending what we run into there.
So, so then the, so you might want to consider.
That's why, that's why I want to give you small projects.
Right, if there's no rush, now that we fix, yeah, wait till next year and, and, Michael, you don't see.
You think, no, you think it's stable, George, then?
The road rig now is still stable, and now that the water's going through, instead of over and washing it out, you know, we'll do the ditch work on the side, which kind of grit the water away from that area too, so. That'll, some of it, so, but I, I want to see if I can open, there's only about three feet that we haven't seen through that culvert. So if we can open that up and see what the top of that culvert looks like, and be able to clean the rest of that out, it's going to be free flowing. And, you know, but I want to see that first, and not knowing what, if that pile of sand is holding up part of the floor. You know, so that's before, that's why I didn't want to spend all the money, I went to ask before I went, you know, because there's about fifty ton of hot top we have to buy.
What's your, what's your estimate for, uh, for the two repairs that you want to do on the ropes?
The things that, the things that we want to fix is about fifty ton of hot top. And total is going to be, it's going to be a little bit out for that, so.
So.
You got to rent the roller and all that?
It's, yeah, and we're not going to need to rent a roller for these two smaller projects that we get, so.
But with the two smaller projects, what do you estimate it's going to cost?
And I'm looking at right now, the, the ones I want to do that a trip has it, and down here are, uh, in front of Stockdale, it's less than six hundred, and then down here at Third and Main, it's six hundred and forty dollars.
So what was the ten thousand, I'm sorry, I thought that.
A total, because I've, I've had other, it's.
He's got a long list of.
Oh, 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 oh.
I hate to be thought if he wants to get down.
I'd like to get down.
So.
But these are immediate ones.
These is, you know.
So with, so the ten thousand is your long list, but it excludes these things that you're?
It would take, well.
Or they?
No, this, this would include these, so this would be coming out of that ten thousand.
Yeah, so.
But there's still going to be enough to do that project that you wanted at the fire station?
Yep, the fire station one is only a couple thousand.
I think we should defer the culvert, if he thinks it's going to go out, you know, and so.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's a rational thing to do.
Does the winter months affect the culvert at all, I mean, like the freezing?
It's just the rain and the rain and stuff, I mean, we can drive over that. I mean, it's still, the road is still open, the water's flowing much better than it has been, we could reopen that bottom culvert. If we can open it more, we'll be much further ahead.
But if you do that, you don't know what you're going to run into, so that's true.
Right, but if we don't have to dig it up.
Do it in the spring.
For next year.
For next year, and you feel comfortable in that?
Yeah, that the way, I mean, we got to this, this is a pretty hefty storm we got.
I'm seeing here, so.
Oh my God, yes, it was.
We got a little bit of rain.
Yeah, a little bit of rain, it's, it's a little.
It did go up, I mean, it did get into the second culvert over that, but now that the bottom one is flowing and the spillway is opened up all the way to river, it eliminated the water as a problem.
Yeah, so, so I would, I would think that we would want to go back to the town for more money for that culvert fund anyway. Because, I mean, it's sort of good news, bad news, the bad news is we still have to do some repairs. But the good news is that, you know, the, this one is going to be much less than anticipated, originally anticipated. And we are, we are, we're working on some good news for the other one, and so this culvert fund may have its end someday. So that, you know, that.
Because the culverts are always going to need repairs.
There'll be other.
There'll be another one that will spring up, I mean, it's not.
No, you, you get some cross culvert joints Sligo Road, they're going to be fixed, that have been never touched, and smaller culverts. Stuff that's been done in house.
The good news is that we have a mechanism that we save for these repairs.
Right, I guess it's a question whether they would just, if they're small enough, they would just sort of come out of your road maintenance. I was thinking of the.
Right, there's no major culvert, you know, you still have Old Mill that you're going to think about, that bridge and stuff, that's a temporary fix.
That's on the CIP, that is on this, yeah, that's already sort of thought through. All right, then I, I will retract my statement about something you won't have to do anymore.
So I can, you know, I didn't know if you wanted me to get one PO for Bronx for all these projects.
Uh.
I can do them individually.
So the PO to Bronx is for what, for the?
For hot top to fix these pad.
I, I would say one PO, yeah, one PO to Bronx.
So that's all fifty tons, you said, George?
Yeah, it'd be about fifty tons of hot top.
That's where your, that's where your whole list.
We can just say for various projects.
You don't have to take receipt of all fifty ton, ton at once, do you?
Oh, no, no.
So you can do up to fifty.
We're going to get done by, it's going to be over two hundred, that's what's going to happen, you know, and that's why I need a PO.
I just want to make sure we're not making him buy all fifty right now.
No, I'm not buying it in advance, and that PO will be used for the next, up to, up to that fifty tons.
They can bill you that way.
Make sure we get two bills, but so.
They can refer to safe deal.
And I'm putting it at eighty dollars a ton versus, it was seventy-one, but they went up a few percent, so it's, you know, so you're looking at what, four thousand dollars?
I don't know, just do that.
Eight times fifty. I have to forty, that much I know.
There we go.
I'll put down four thousand.
That much I know.
I forgot that it said hundred and tons.
No, we'll put it down that way, then we can get, uh, on these projects, and that'll get the price of the road this time, but playing that one out.
It might be nice to let the town know what we're planning to do. And we're including the fire station as part of.
In the front of the fire station, uh, sidewalk in front of number four forty Stockdale Circle. Roots have.
The what in front of?
Sidewalk. Roots have lifted the sidewalk, and people have been tripping and falling. So then they go to the sidewalk, they go to the roots, and then repave that in. Locust and Main, I want to do something with that, down the bottom of that, though it's breaking up, we're going to get people calling, and you know that, so we're going to repave that in. Main and Third is a bad section, and then in front of seven oh one Main Street, the sidewalk. We run into it when we're plowing, so we're going to bring it up just over the curb, and so we can pave, plow it easier. And there's a swell on, in front of Ten Highland Street, all the water is running down, and yet the swell is not continuing in front of the driveway, so I just got to, that's less than a ton of hot top there, fix that. I'm looking for four thousand dollars of, 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 of damage driving.
Move purchase order number one four two five to Bronx for up, for hot top, up to, say forty tons, fifty tons? How much do you need to?
I'd put four thousand, it's fifty ton, up to roughly fifty ton.
For hot top, for various projects, paving products around town for four thousand dollars.
Second.
Comments or questions? Those that gave a say aye?
Aye.
One four two five. Good?
I'm good. You're good?
Good.
Transfer station sticker that needs to be revoked?
Is that George's?
It's under, I don't know, it's under.
Well, I think this, this probably doesn't require George, I think that's probably our decision or not?
Yes, we'll revoke it, but if we're going to revoke it, the transfer station, we want you to know what vehicle it is and all that, so. Shouldn't be coming in right now.
Okay, well, you'd like to introduce the topic? I don't know, let's introduce the topic, then we'll be.
The town clerk has notified us that there is a former property owner here in town. He owned a multi-unit property on South Street, had, uh, no longer owns it, and that he still has a transfer station sticker. And that it should be returned to the town, taken off his vehicle and returned to the town.
Just curious, do we do that, both people who are out of town?
No, but this, this individual has been reported by other people, including our police chief, I think at one point, neighbor. Sometimes he showed, his vehicle these times was full of garbage, and then heads to the transfer station in Broadensford after he picks up the garbage from his unit, so.
Well, so the board would like to, the board would like to ask for the transfer station sticker back, is that, is that what I'm hearing?
If he's still using it, yeah, I, I don't know this person, so.
How would this letter get written, who would be writing this letter?
The board, I'm sure, can handle it, all right.
All right, so we're good with Michael writing a letter to Mr. Massey, to the transfer stations. And perhaps you can let George know what. I, I do have something else that came up also, uh, when your predecessor was here, he used to help when the garden club did cleanup on Cross Street, and he would pick up the brush at the end of it. So, thank you, and it's town property, so, so the last time we did it, he never picked it up. And so it's still there at the top, at the bottom of the hill in the garden place. So, if you, do you know, uh, Cross Street?
Oh, yes, I know.
Yeah, so there's that walkway, yeah, it's right near Michael's house, so there's that walkway, where apparently there's a pile of brush. Now, there's a pile of mulch too, the mulch stays, it's the brush, and if you're not sure, just give me a call.
Actually, right next to the dumpster, it's taller than the dumpster at this point.
So Michael knows.
All right.
Thank you.
It's next to my house.
Cross Street, right?
Cross Street, yeah.
No, and then, like I said, when they do the spring cleanups and stuff like that, we have no going, going out, pick up the bag and stuff.
Appreciate it, and Jeff was going to do it, he just never, I guess he never got around to it, and then.
Okay, so. I'd like to put an ad out, potential people working in advance of station.
I think we okayed that, we just said, please work with Caroline, use the free, use the free thingies, yeah.
Other than that, I'm good.
If you're going to hire, you would have to.
I did one, just, you know, we don't know what's going to happen until.
So you just get a name, that's fine. All right, was there, um, so as long as you are here, there is something else, it's Michael, Michael, just to point this out. So you were requesting a town email for the transfer station manager?
Yes, for that.
So it would be an alias of, like, transfer station managers, and I could reuse Rogue for you or.
Road agent, or something like that, I get road agent in my own name.
So, is there a cost, ten dollars a month for us to do that? So, at this point, for the rest of this year, there's, which I'm looking at, it's like forty bucks, so, which is less than. So I'll just ask for consensus, unless there's a.
I'll catch you in front.
So next year we'll have to add a hundred and twenty to that one. They do, they're helpful, I think, to have town emails.
Especially when you're dealing with, uh, mail from the NRO.
Yes, and he has an official, yeah, absolutely, all right, so, uh, can you tell me, his name is Edward?
Edward Walsh, W A L S H.
Okay, so I will send him up with an email at gmail, I mean, not gmail, at, at all, it's for down in the US. And with an alias of some type, which, you know, we did for you. All right, very good, thank you. I'm just going to briefly get these up to you and tell you, um, management discussion and analysis. Thank you. Discussion and analysis, hmm, interesting, I'm really not familiar with it, thank you so much. All right, did you, are you, are you ready?
I'm ready. Is there any money left to spend? I always purchase a little, want some. Actually, I'm not spending any money today.
Oh, wonderful, and you haven't discovered anything? Oh, wonderful, and you haven't discovered anything new with the building?
No. The H B A system, they actually started repairing, replacing systems, I should say, and in my absence, I guess there was a conversation between my lieutenant and Suzanne about the placement of the condensing unit. Apparently there are some issues with how the line needs to be connected from inside the building to outside the building, and they're not able to go over the existing beams within the, uh, below your floor and above my ceiling. Uh, because one room, which is the interview room, has a finished ceiling. With plywood, because that was actually a second temporary tension room, so they don't have access to that.
Got you.
And plus it makes it a lot harder to take the fighter to do this.
Sure.
So they want to go straight out, um, the ceiling and out the back wall of my office, which comes out in the front corner over here, looking at the building. So they want to put the condenser unit on, you get that rock gravel area between the parking space and the elevator shaft.
Yep.
They want to put one new unit right there.
Now, I still look at it, you know, it's just in the corner of that building, it's supposed to, that corner is supposed to be that corner, yeah, so it's a little more, it is more visible, but it's, you know, it's.
Well, they'll have to let the town, they'll just, they'll just snow on top of it, and winter time.
It's outside, it's an outside.
It's outside, yeah.
Oh, they're all, they're all outside.
The compressor is the big unit, they get outside, and then the air handle is what, like, parked, it goes in the ceiling on the inside.
Compressor outside, yeah. It's pretty farmed. I think it's farmed, is it close to the parking area, would it get covered with snow, or?
If they push the snow that direction, yes, but generally they don't, they usually push it that way and then that way, so.
We'll put one of those flags or something on it.
Yeah, you're not having any concern about it getting vandalized or anything being on the front like that, or?
No different than being on the back, it's covered by the camera, so.
I guess you can see it from the street.
It's, it's, we're, it would be more susceptible to an itch if someone was controlling their vehicle out front, they're not going to do it like in the past.
Yeah.
Should we put a fence around it, like a, just a?
Take a look, I don't think it's.
Well, you could eventually, but I wouldn't recommend it.
I don't think it's set vulnerable, I mean, I did go out, I encourage you to look at, I actually went out there and looked.
The unit will be fairly close to the building.
Yeah.
So you're going to, you're going to have five or six feet of that big rip ramp.
Yeah, all right, so.
Yeah, we got the call seven thirty this morning, yeah, we're on the way, so get ready, so, okay, well, time to prepare. On another note, I just want to say thank you for your service to the town, it certainly has been a pleasure working with you and for you these years, and that, you know, certainly, you know, with your participation on the board and then your leadership on the board. I certainly think that the SLUG board as a whole is now looking at the needs of tunnel problems, the future needs of tunnel problems, and in different manner than hasn't passed. You know, I can certainly say, you know, I've worked with many members of the SLUG board over the years, since the beginning of nineteen eighty, and that, you know, certainly, you know, it certainly has been an honor, an honor to work with. Thank you. Thank you. And, you know, the door's always open downstairs, if you want to go back and visit, can you chat, have a coffee, tea or something, maybe a glass of wine?
I'll come to your coffee.
After hours, after hours, okay. The last thing, we have, I would like the board, and especially Suzanne, to help out, help me present some awards to my department.
Do you have any questions before you do that?
You may.
Are we all set for tomorrow?
As far as I know, we are.
Okay, you've done, you would have said in front of the room?
I called them both, they'll be here at their lot of times, six thirty and seven thirty.
They're going to use the bath or not?
Neither one of them said that they were going to.
Okay.
So, what I figured I'd do was I'd set up a table in the corner over there for the committee, and set up chairs out here for anybody else, on the table over there, encased, and we'd do so.
I'll be here.
The tripod too, and, uh, we have a tripod in the planning, they have, they didn't bring their own.
Oh, for stand?
Yeah.
I'll grab that.
Yeah, I needed one, I meant not a tripod, thank you, I meant an easel.
Hopefully we stay in the room only, but.
I'm so good, you never know.
All right.
Gentlemen.
Come on in, please, come on in. Come on in. It's a good looking crew.
It's the Beards.
All right, we'll tell Benjamin. Oh, come on. All right, Benjamin, you're getting a letter of commendation. This letter of commendation is awarded to you for your unwavering enthusiasm and support of the mission of the Rollinsford Police Department. Without hesitation or complaint, you have sacrificed much of your personal time to cover shifts when needed. Additionally, you have become a member of the Stravick County Accident Reconstruction Team, and most recently, uh, you've come, you've signed on to become part of the County Drone Operations Team. And I have heard from the commander of the tactical team, Accident Reconstruction Team, and that he's praised your work ethic and your enthusiasm. So congratulations on a job well done, you certainly are definitely an asset for the department.
Thank you, I love to do it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Well, I'm wondering, so where's our director of production? Here.
Stay right behind the table while maybe you can come over there.
Okay. Jimmy. On Tuesday, December twelfth. On Tuesday, December twelfth, twenty seventeen, you respond to a Highland Avenue residence from medical assist call. Upon your arrival, you find the victim not conscious, not breathing, blue in color, and suffering from a drug overdose. Without hesitation, you begin to administer CPR, and continue to do so for quite some time until his breathing and pulse return. The victim certainly would have succumbed to the overdose if not for your quick actions. You are hereby awarded the department's lifesaving award. Sean. On Monday, July second, twenty eighteen, you respond to an Oak Street residence for medical assist call. Upon your arrival, you find the victim not conscious, not breathing, and suffering from another overdose. Without hesitation, you begin to administer CPR, continue to do so for quite some time until his breathing and pulse return. The victim certainly would have succumbed to the overdose if not for your quick actions. You are hereby awarded the department's lifesaving award. Will. Your statistics for criminal motor vehicle activity arrests, and more importantly, your overall proactive activity has by far surpassed all others. Anyone can have numbers statistically, but your numbers are derived from the quality law enforcement procedures, thus reducing the chances of being challenged by the suspects, defendants, and the courts. Additionally, you took an additional responsibility to become a department fire instructor, which includes handguns, rifles, and shotguns. You are the department's representative on the county SWAT team, and that team commander has repeatedly praised your initiative and your work ethic for the team. You have shown a remarkable sense of enthusiasm and approach to your chosen, chosen profession. Congratulations on a job well done, you are hereby awarded the department's officer of the year award for twenty seventeen. Maybe if I get a photo of, of them, and I can.
Absolutely.
Back here, or?
Back here.
Yeah. Can you guys, just like the SLUG board?
You want just a photo?
So for a photo?
Would you like to do it there?
I'll, I'll crop it, so.
Yeah, I like that.
Come on, guys.
There we go.
Show the love. Smile. All right, we'll take one more for good measure, to make sure. Smile. Beautiful.
This is your last word?
It is, it is.
Thank you very much.
How, how long has it been?
Five and a half, first, it was really bad. All right, thanks, guys, thanks for working.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for helping, I certainly appreciate that.
That's, that's the nice part.
Right.
That's the fun part.
And that's all that I have for the board, everything from me.
Nope, we talked about the A C compressor replacement there, uh, which was the one thing that.
It's all been air conditioning.
I don't think you were here last, when Tamara Nitschowski came to talk to us as the new chair of Conservation Commission? And just so that everybody hears it again, so we don't forget, you know, the six oh three, whatever that group is that does the April race? They are, because they're not a nonprofit, I guess they're a corporate or something, excuse me, they're not allowed to use scout land according to the easement of, according to easement to scout lands, so, so just to keep that in mind. Uh, and Tamara's going to write some kind of use, their, how to use scout land or what's, so that people.
Don't violate easement.
Yeah, we don't violate easement, so.
No, it's a shame, too.
They just, I know they just did the race in Dover.
They did, yeah, they did, I appreciate it.
You know, they, you know, they, they could possibly waive it, you know, I, I don't know, I just know that in and of itself, it's not an allowed activity, so.
And who actually waived it, would be the SLUG board, would it?
I don't know, we were not, we were not supposed to give permission.
Permission for a place, alright.
Yeah, so. So it would be the Conservation Commission, via the, whoever is holding the conservation easement, which in this case is southeast side, yeah. So, there you go, there's always something to learn.
Alright, thank you, have a good night.
Oh, I don't know.
I think he, he was here for you presentation, he just, just took that off.
Okay, so the tax collector, I guess, is coming next one to talk to, to, um, okay, so now we're in town administration, right? All right, so the question with regard to the pay increases that we've recently provided to our transfer station, to Ed, who was taken on, not solely the transfer station.
Right.
Taken on that duty, and then the pay increase to George. I spoke with Caroline, and she said it would be good for the board to make clear when that is, and that it's always best to have it at a pay period.
Right.
So that pay period start would be, be August sixth. So I would like the board to make a motion to provide those two increases as effective, I guess, August sixth.
I'll make a motion to have the pay increases effective August sixth for the transfer station manager and the road agent.
Select.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you, appreciate it. The town hall maintenance, the protocol, so that we're keeping that, that we're keeping that on though, because Caroline still has, the dust has to settle all the work that's going to happen with.
Just make sure that you email didn't get, I emailed him again the other day. I mean, maybe traveling for work, I don't know, he's not on call.
Correct.
I mean, you know, but, I did, no, no, but I had, did not, did not respond.
So, well, you know, so, two things have to happen, we need to have some idea of what it would cost, but also we need to know what's going to be left in town hall maintenance once we move budget dollars from R P D to cover these, uh, the generator.
Right.
Maintenance and the compressor.
Stuck in my mailbox or something.
All right, I'll let you look at that, we'll just go on. Uh, Conservation Commission, the fund management, so Michael, I think you've got some information to share, to share on that?
Yeah, sorry, I mean.
All right, well, we'll give you a few.
No, I got it, it's not here, it's not, the mailbox, so, yeah, I, I emailed, uh, the nice folks at Municipal Association, and lo and behold, the, the town treasurer is actually supposed to be managing, not managing, but actually dispersing, um, the, probably easier.
Oh, sure, that would be fun.
Sure, so.
Isn't it frustrating when you bother to include the people you want to heat that you, and then they only respond to you?
They only respond to you, yes, and I was, you know, as I was doing it, I was like, oh, I know that I could respond to all of those, but anyways. Uh, good afternoon, Mike, by law, the treasurer has custody of the Conservation Commission fund monies and must pay out upon lawful order of the commission. RSA thirty six A five appropriations authorized, a town or city having established a conservation commission, which we did, uh, may appropriate money as deemed necessary for the purposes of this chapter. The whole or any part of the money so appropriated in any year, and any gifts or monies received pursuant to RSA thirty six A four may be placed in a conservation fund and allowed to accumulate from year to year. Money may be expended from said fund, right, and they, she highlighted this, money may be expended from said fund by Conservation Commission for the purposes of this chapter without further approval of the town meeting. Uh, the town treasurer pursuant to RSA forty one twenty nine shall have custody of all monies in the conservation fund and shall pay out the same only upon order of the Conservation Commission. The disbursement of conservation funds shall be authorized by a majority of the Conservation Commission. Prior to the use of such funds for the purchase of any interest in real property or for any contribution to a qualified organization for the purchase of property, interest. But RSA thirty six A four subsection A, um, Roman one, subsection B, that's a Roman four, the Conservation Commission shall hold in public hearing. Sorry, I'm not laughing at that, laughing at the reference, uh, we've noticed in accordance with another statute. Uh, the municipality that has adopted the provisions of RSA seven nine eight twenty five, Roman two, this specified, uh, said, did we get a, what about the, uh, interest chart? Conservation Commission funds can be spent deferred to purposes of the Conservation Commission statute, RSA chapter thirty seven, that was the first question was, who, who was supposed to be dispersing these funds? With the creation themselves or to the town treasurer? We didn't know, and so we found out, okay, so it's the town treasurer after.
Per, per.
Authorization of a majority vote of the Conservation Fund, so now we know that. So we should relay that to both the Concom and the town treasurer. Now, the Conservation Commission funds can be spent further, so the next question was, sorry, can, what can they spend the money on? In a nutshell, I can read the entire email, but, in a statutory reference again, but basically it said that they are allowed to hire consultants, um, the commission generally has authority to engage in activities and assist in the proper utilization and protection of natural resources and fulfilling these duties. The commission may hire consultants to engage consultants, or engage consultants, sorry, so, as long as part of the stated purpose of hiring like rules. What's the team, Plan New Hampshire, or what are they called?
Plan New Hampshire.
Plan New Hampshire. I just, because I didn't remember their, kind of remember their name, so, for sake of argument, if they, if the town wanted to hire them, and part of the contract was to preserve, uh, and protect conservation land or to incorporate more conservation land. Then, yeah, the Municipal Association says that it's lawful for them to, to help pay for the government costs, or pay the cost, and I forwarded the email as well.
So, yeah, sure, of course, thank you for doing that, so how do we communicate this thing, how, what, what would you suggest?
We'll send a email to, I can put an email together, um, to the treasurer and to the Concom.
Okay, sounds good, they have a, an email?
So, they can, um, they submit their requests for payment to be made, and he can't refuse it, he has to sign it, and he has to do it, correct?
Long as the majority of the.
Just like for us, although at first they were a couple of, he.
He rejected him, right, and was like, he can't do that with this, however, he probably needs to be put on that account, because they don't, he is on it.
Well, that's the other thing, too, so we need to make sure that.
The one, the checking account, because he is getting the savings account, but now he'll have to be on the checking as well and write that check.
Right, yeah, and that's my interpretation as well.
Yeah, that would be mine too, I just want to make sure he can't refuse them. Just, as long as they have their vote in the order.
Yeah, yeah, it has to be a majority of the, of the commission, so. The email to the, uh, Concom. I think what I will do is I will forward the email from, uh, the inquiries with a little explanation.
Then it's, then it's not your words, it's there.
Oh, yeah.
You don't have to regurgitate it all.
Exactly.
Mike, could you forward me that email as well?
Sure. I've got it right now, before I forget. So you can have it for a minute, so you got it. That's all I have for that anyways.
All right, well, that's a job well done, thank you. Okay, transfer station, I think that's there just to.
I forwarded you all, um, edits earlier to. I forwarded you all edits earlier today, around 1:30.
So when do we need to get this out in order to make the, so we can, we can publish it, the date for the ordinance, and then say the materials will be available by such and such date if not going to make it, so that's...
I mean, we can, um, you have not seen them yet tonight, I can get that, so, we need tonight and take it up next week. Yeah, they're pretty...
I didn't see them either. I'm, I'm accessing them now, so...
No worries. So I, I will tell you, so, basically, um, the one thing we were holding, I was held up on was the transferability of the sticker, right? So, you buy a new card, you have to get a new sticker. I suggested, you don't have to go along with it, that, yes, you can transfer the vehicle along to the store, it's registered to the, to the same person, same names, it's the same people, and it's a $5 fee to transfers for administrative costs.
But you're gonna have to get another sticker.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They'll give you, they'll give you a sticker.
You can't take it off and put it on another sticker.
Yeah.
Not easily.
Not easily, no. So, that's all that's missing. But we have, it's been shared, so you can see.
Okay, I'll put it on tonight. Okay, um, thank you. And non-spoken policy, again, that's there just as a...
Holding pattern, yeah.
Yep. Do you want me to put it, there's a, do you want me to put it on hold or, or do you like, that was for the transfer station.
Yeah, maybe stick it up under transfer, just so...
Yeah, that might be a good idea.
Oh, okay. Anything to say about recreation? Actually, I'm glad you're here, because they were stuck in there and I said, you know, if Denise hasn't seen them, I, I don't want to sign them.
I have, I have seen and been, and know about all of these.
Okay, good. So when time comes, then...
Yeah, so, what I know about dollars, I believe all of these were a part of this. I got a little worried when I saw all these POs, but I think it's something we'd already approved, and so it was part of the budget that, that was telling you about previously. So, yes, I am aware of all of these here. So, it's governed...
I'm not agreed.
I am.
I mean, you know, we don't have to, while we're doing it.
All right, we have a request for dispersment to Kelly Anderson for $100.75. It was a rainy day, rainy day for Team Camp.
We couldn't go to, where, a lot of time for really, though.
So I'll take that as a boot, as a motion, and you want a second of that, okay? So, any questions or comments? Any favors say aye.
Aye. And this is a, P O 1476, for a quantity of 11 Water Country tickets online. This is what I talked to you about. We got a big discount on it when we did it on her credit card, and so the total on that is $339.89. This is to the director of Team Camp.
Sorry, is that a second? I think that was a, did you get the number?
1476.
Yes.
33989.
33989. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
It could have been under our request for dispersment, because she used her money, right? Or just...
Yeah, it should have been, though. Could we say, whatever, 10% or 20% or something like that?
Yeah, $10 off that one, that ticket, yeah. I don't know what this one is. This is for the, this is a dispersment. Oh, maybe this, I think this is the same one, although this is a different amount.
This is, I was there when they were talking, and there was one where they split it so that it wouldn't have such a large hit on each person's credit card.
Ah, so that's two.
Oh, okay. So, oh, oh, but this for the same person, though? Hmm, oh. All right, so, first receipt for the kids, first receipt. So this is $10, quantity of 10, that's quantity of 11. It must be the split, so it must be another one, although it's on the same credit card. Order total, $32.
Do you want to put it aside so you can clarify?
Yeah, yeah. Um, because the request amount is 34288, but then the total due is $32.99. That was asked for one ticket. Oh, maybe that was for, oh, maybe that was for her. One, 10 teams and one counselor. This PO should cover it. If it doesn't cover it, then we'll have to do it again next week. So let's just do this, and then we'll question this one. I'm gonna write a note on that. Um, the next one is P O 1482, Catherine Lutz, eight Team Camp tickets for Fun Town, Splash Town, seven teams and one counselor. $312 is the price on that, so...
Uh, I have a question. So, it's, these are reimbursements, so I just wonder why, I mean, it's okay that they're purchased, they have to be on something.
I think it was the value. It's over 300.
Dispersments can be for, for anybody.
Oh, okay.
There is no, because they're gonna require, they require us to look at them.
Okay.
So as long as they require us to look at them.
They don't need P O.
They don't, they don't need a, there's no upper limit.
Okay.
So whether it's a PO or, in this case, it's actually, is a reimbursement, right? So, but I don't think it makes any difference, because either way, we're just saying, yes, it's okay.
Yep, yep.
So, it's just a...
Tell them it went forward.
All right, so I think we had a motion and a second. Michael, did you, all those in favor say aye?
Aye. Okay, see, this one, they did it, they did both, so I will tell them they don't have to do that on the floor. This is, this is the fourth one that you were talking about. This is, um, Kennedy Lake, a reimbursement for Kelly Anderson for $238. This is a Team Camp at Kennedy Lake Park, for $238. And the other one is for Cal.
Let's do one, yeah, do one. So, it's a request for dispersment to, a motion to disperse, I got a motion and a second for $238. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Okay, and the other one is for Catherine Lutz, and this is for Team Camp at Kennedy Lake Park, and again, they split it so they wouldn't have each other's too much on their credit cards. So that one is for $272.
A request for dispersment?
Yes.
Second.
Uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye. At least two of these POs, we'll just put it there. They were a PO on this, so I will talk to it. They probably thought it was a dollar amount issue. And, that's all.
That's it?
Yeah.
Correct.
So it's going well, and, you know, they're, they're kind of winding down, which is, you know, good, so...
And the Team Camp ends a week earlier, right?
Yes, it does, yeah, yeah. And so this, when these dispersments is on par, they're, they're priced, they knew, they counted that in with the teams, because they always were on the trip three days a week, the president, the other ones weren't, they're always on the trip, so. And that was part of their, 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 their price that they paid in our budget, yeah.
Thank you. So, transfer station post closure report, this is still sort of like the sort of dam of place, still hanging over our heads, and Caroline needs a board member to work with her on this. So I don't know which of you would like to offer to help with that. I guess that's Mike.
Sorry, we'll hold on a minute.
The post closure report, or the transfer station, okay. Paul's in Tamara, that's here, because we're still waiting for somebody to get hold of the condition so that we can sort of waive that in front of them. So it's just their, that sort of thing. And we'll pay the attention in right now as well, because I don't have anything to say. The transition plan, uh, the transition is not completed today, so, so unless there's something to say about how you want to go forward, we'll just, you know, we'll just let that be. In which case, we are town administration standing items, and what are our upcoming activities and dates, board members? Mike, anything for you?
I'm on my work.
Yeah, I see that.
Besides that, no.
Tomorrow night is the public hearing for the proposal of the new transfer station here at the, uh, town hall, I'm sorry, police station and/or police administration building. They have two of the people who submitted bits with their proposals, are gonna speak, one is at 6:30 and one is at 7:30, and we will be taking questions and comments at the time. So do you know if anybody's going to tape this? Do you know, Mike?
Unless it's, I'm taping, but I don't know if the town is taking it on.
Should I ask for someone to kind of tape this? Are you interested at all?
It's at 6:30. More than likely, I could, but I'm on call to pick somebody up in the hospital.
Can we, can we just, can we have a point of information? Mike?
Yeah, sorry, I'm putting in, I'm meaning to go ahead of that, yeah.
I mean, if it's like a, 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 a public hearing is for a definite proposal to do something, isn't this more...
I don't think it's a public, I think it's an informational session.
Is a public hearing, great hearing public, that, just to be informed of what is going forward.
Exactly. So I don't think we need...
You don't think we need minutes?
You, you could just, you can file that, that you held a meeting to do that, you know, as part of your groups, and started at this, so and so spoke at 6:30, so and so spoke at 7:30, public was invited, and that's, that's just correct.
It was advertised to public hearing, so...
I did that because that's what I thought it was.
So you didn't need to take comments in the public.
Well, we are here to take comments in the public.
It's just a question of, but there's no actual...
Well, it, yeah, yeah.
So I, I, that's, that's my opinion, is that you could just say that the meeting took place, public was here, they had an opportunity to make comments, ask questions, blah, 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 and...
We had taped record of it.
Well, they said they, you're gonna, you're gonna have some here, so if we don't have a hard one, we'll do it.
However, we can set this thing up. I'll be here to watch and just listen, so...
I think you're free. I think you don't, you don't need to, I think as well.
Right. Okay, all right. So if we have one taping which you're gonna post, right?
But they don't have a site, yeah, town website.
Can we have a copy of it posted on town, town website?
None of the others out, but yeah.
I mean, just because I, I wasn't sure if we were gonna, how we had to do that, so, if we could have a copy of yours and have to take that, put it on the town website.
I'll ask Vern, because he's the one that...
Vern's the one that does it.
Vern's the one that does all of the putting on, so...
Oh, Mike, if you're gonna be here, do you want to do that?
Sure. I don't, I don't know how to do it, so I always don't like that. Okay, well, see, if we have someone to do it, then we won't need it, but if not, well, I'm sorry. Seriously. So, we will have our candidate members here as well, and the chief has contacted the people to come, so, yeah.
So my, here's just my understanding of a public hearing, I think, whatever. Public hearing is when there is something, a proposal that is going to be voted on by us, and we want to get input from the public before we have our vote. And so therefore, we are...
But isn't that what we're doing?
No, there's no, there's no proposal.
There's no proposal, so...
Well, I know, but there's going to be a proposal probably.
Then we'll have a public hearing.
So you're gonna have another one?
The select board will have a public hearing.
The select board will have a public hearing. This is the, the minimum having a public hearing.
Well, no, it's not.
Informationalism. Well, it went up as a public hearing, so I have to say it's a public hearing. You know, but I understand what you're saying.
Nonetheless, you can just clarify as hard as I can.
We're gonna hear some comments, because the people, if they have questions, I'm certainly not gonna stop them from asking a question.
No, absolutely not. I think that's absolutely appropriate, want as much input as possible, for as many people as possible. It's just that there's no subsequent vote that's going to take place.
Not after this one, no. Okay.
At that point, there will be, at some point, there will be presumably a proposal with a dollar amount, and this is what's gonna happen, and then you need a public hearing.
And then the board's, like, many of the public hearing, not the committee. Yes, that becomes ours.
All right.
The, the, the committee will, will make a recommendation to the, to the select board.
Correct.
And then we'll either agree with that recommendation or not, and then if we do agree, then we'll hold public hearings on several of them, I would assume, large dollar amounts.
Yes, I'm clear now.
Anything else going on this week? This budget committee on Wednesday.
Yeah, I've got, yeah, quite a long day.
So, which is why I made my last day on Friday, so I'll be here to, 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 to present this. You saw the summary that I wrote that, that's for all of the budgets.
Yes.
And I did change the, but, I did add to the budget provisions, the dollar amounts for the two positions that we had already agreed on, even though there's no expense associated with it. I just, I did change the budgets. I knew there was something else. Tomorrow, I'm meeting with SRDC to talk about the road service management system and the upgrading thereof. So I will be there with George, and I'll write my comments to the board, and then you can decide what you want to do. There's going to be a price tag that is associated with this. And so I may spend a little bit of time afterwards with George, I don't know what it's gonna say, but just to see if he has any money in his budget to carve out, all right? And then we can let you know that. I think otherwise, that is all that I know of that's going on this week. So let's go to appointments.
Oh, we don't read them, no?
We don't read them, we sign them up, right? We have to sign them at a meeting. So you can have the minister like that the board is signing the permits approved, but... What was this, a crisis of...
No, there was a, there was a sticky note on it. I didn't see it. It said, please hold for next week if Tom has more information he received. So, it's all good.
Why is it pressed off?
That's what I just asked.
Oh, I'm sorry.
He, his true signature's at the end, although it's hard to, to recognize the true signature from the scribble in front. That's his signature. So as long as there are at least two really legible ones, I'm yours, mine.
I, in my haste last week in signing them all, it was a sticky note, but I missed it.
Oh, you had signed it too soon?
Yes. And it said, please hold for next week. And I guess that is technically, I need you, because no one else signed it at the time, but I just crossed it. It should be good enough.
You signed this one twice, didn't you?
Oh, where?
Here and there.
Let me see. Just find a space, I'm so stimulated.
Just wanted to make sure it was a fish out.
I have short-term ideas, it's like, this is definitely something going on here.
That's it.
I must have been, I must have been distracted.
Make their way back down, right in the green.
I'm sorry, Mike?
Whenever they're down, you just gotta make it. Make their way back down, please.
That's our, it's almost done.
Pardon? He is supposed to handle it. I don't know whether Tamara trained him, I think, I thought.
Who knows?
Oh, he's trained us.
Yeah. He's struggling us.
That's right, he was training.
So you're also here folding it?
Yeah.
All right, so please, it's ready.
All right. Um, I have this endangered species thing.
That should go with the notice of intent, so keep it in the folder.
Okay, dear. Not to be so, okay. This is the check signing thing. I believe this has to do with you coming off and so having to go on.
Yes, they, they rely on us, and we had to do this, so I don't, it's up to the two of you, I don't know.
I'm assuming it's you, Michael, since you must be chair. What do you call? This is for the paychecks.
Yeah, I guess so. We'll discuss next, what will happen moving forward, but I think temporarily, as I was just saying, I think what should happen next week is I should continue on as acting chair, and if, when and if we find someone, to put it this way, what's your place, excuse me, I don't have any questions, to replace the, the empty position, then we should have a new election for chair, and if you want to be chair, I'll be happy to do it, but I think that, that's how it should work.
So you'll be elected chair based on the fact that you're currently vice chair?
Yeah, until we find someone, if that's okay.
I don't know why we have to have another election, though, if we find somebody. It should remain as it is until March.
Michael is just, he's, Michael is just being stickler for that sort of thing.
I mean, we don't have to, it just seemed like it was the right thing to do to be.
Okay.
But it'll be up to...
Well, I mean, you may find that you don't want me to be in charge, so you don't want to get stuck, you know, with these stuff.
I did just remember another activity that I'm doing this week, so I'll use the opportunity to say that. So the notice of intent for the MS4, which is a real thing, they really have to get it on the cover first, and it has real obligations, the town is gonna have to fulfill, I mean, this is a... And it has real obligations of the time it's gonna have to fulfill, I mean, this is a plan, but.
It looks like, and he did.
Yeah, I guess so, I don't know why. Double signatures, they want to see them go around.
Make sure I sign it the right way.
Yeah, same way, yeah. Use version, whatever, whatever version that is.
I guess everyone's not quite advancing.
So can I, all of my soapbox? So. So, the, this notice of intent, we're, that we're trying to keep, we're trying to keep a fair and adequate response to what we're supposed to do for EPA. But the Seacoast Stormwater Coalition. We have to put the name. Seacoast Stormwater Coalition, especially the U N H Stormwater Center, J B Cool, has, has done a great job. They're trying to manage so that we have an adequate response. Not, you know, we're trying to contain what we have to do so that it's not a problem. And so the fact that, you know, everybody is going to be doing the same thing increases the defensibility, pretense, and all that sort of stuff. So that's what we're working on. And I, first I thought, well, it would be the Stormwater Committee that would be doing that, and I had asked you to point lead to that. But it, we need, I, I'm now thinking that we need a shirt sleeve working group, and that group is going to be, the board so agrees. Caroline, me, Paul Gazalt, who's been the elbow deep in all of this, and George, as we need him for particular pieces of information. Does that, does that work for you? So we are working, so, so again, Paul, Caroline and I are meeting this Wednesday to shirt sleeves, roll up the shirts sleeves and try to get the first two pages done. And you're gonna come grade this for the endangered species, which will be part of it.
Okay.
So that's, that's what's happening. We're supposed to be working on pages one and two from now through sometime in mid-August. Mid-August, there'll be another meeting of the Seacoast Stormwater Coalition, at which point they'll help us with the rest of it. And Caroline, I'm hoping, I'm hoping that the board agrees that Caroline is the person to go to this. I won't be able to, again, because it's just a tired year, and it's my family reunion, I just can't. Caroline, I'm bringing her up to speed on that, so if she goes, I think we'll be in good stead.
She has it on her calendar?
Um, she will. Yeah, she's been on, she's, we've asked to put her on the mailing list, and.
Okay.
It's the third, third Wednesday, I think, so. But, you know, once this thing is submitted to the EPA, it then becomes our obligation to do what we say we are going to do. So at some point, the board will be able to look at this and, and, you know, have a reaction to it. And the Stormwater Committee, at that point, I think, exists to sort of help guide, to take, to, to sort of be there looking at this plan and making further recommendations about either priorities or this or that, so that the board doesn't have to get involved and, you know, can just listen to a recommendation as opposed to trying to think about what to do. So it's, it's, hopefully, we've got it sort of contained. All right, so that's all I wanted to say about that.
Um, maybe I'm sure Minnesota Bank Fund, this is its second request, please reply. Their auditors are proposing an audit for our financial statement as of June thirtieth. In connection with, um, you are requested to confirm directly to them correctness of the information listed below as of June thirtieth.
I asked Caroline to take a look at this, to make sure that these figures are correct. I don't see anything.
I don't see anything.
So let's put a note that says Caroline, did you have a chance to, to check? So what they're asking is, is the principal outstanding as of June thirtieth, twenty eighteen, correct? And is our interest outstanding as of June thirtieth, correct? So I know that we've made two payments to them, I think both before June thirtieth. So she's got the schedule, so she just needs to verify, and then the board can sign it next week.
The next one, this is the credit card, I don't know what split means. What does split mean?
Oh, she has some splitting to do, I think.
Okay, so.
I looked, I did look through it.
And you saw this, you see it?
Yeah, I, I didn't see any problems, but it's, you know, it's here if board members also want to see. But everybody's amounts are under the two hundred dollars and it all, you know, stable, yes, and supplies that.
Okay.
And if, and if you ever get to a point where you think that it's sufficient for the board member who's authorizing these to just, then you could just not have to.
Yes.
Be your choice.
Um, Townsith Energy, uh, we would like to thank you for your valid business and the forward opportunity to serve you in the upcoming year. This is their proposal, um, for the town of Rollers, their propane will be fixed at two point one nine-nine per gallon. Number two oil is point one eight cents over our cost of the, on the day of delivery. On road diesel, point eighteen cents over our cost on the day of delivery. And service pricing is a hundred and ten per hour plus any parts used. All fuels under this contract will be deliverable between July first and April thirtieth. All deliveries are payable within thirty days.
So that's a proposal, it seems like, um.
I'm gonna go for a post, I've never on it, and check and see if the school district is going to, are they already, they already.
They've received it, I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't listen to the rest of the question.
If they're gonna go along with, with Townsith, it might make sense for us to. And they also have much more, uh, staff, uh, capacity than we do, so they work on.
Yeah, they have received it, and it is the same. But they haven't have to.
Okay, so I have to say the school's part of this proposal, is what we're asking, correct?
Or have, has the school, has the school accepted their proposal for Townsith? That's, it's not the same proposal, it's, I mean, it's similar.
Same dollar amount. And, uh, whatever the over wrap, whatever the.
Eighteen cents.
What, the eighteen cents over wrap.
And then we'll sign it after that. Um, this is the town Rollers, this is a.
Second to the county, yes, you mean. So I'm sure we do this every year, and this is actually a letter that, you know, it's a stock letter that Tom has prepared for us. That says that we are attesting to the fact that we've defined to them our financial statements that we, we didn't, you know, that we're following, except to their accounting and financial practices, that we have no knowledge of any fraud, that is unregulated against the town. We have no knowledge of any lawsuits that are pending, uh, that were not, uh, there were no regulatory agencies that, you know, have put a sort of dam place up for, and other than closure, um, et cetera, et cetera. So that's kind of what it says. And so unless there is a dissension from board, I will just sign that says, yes, that is how we manage the audit. I see Caroline was also asked to sign this, they were. All right. Is this, is this due anywhere?
That's all I've got on that.
Is it? All right, is nothing else?
I, I just had a comment, we had given some information in the last week, and like, wanted to look it over about some other additional changes in, um, staff hours and salaries.
Oh, the budget revision.
Oh, the budget revision, yeah.
Um, are we going to take action sometime on that? Soon?
I, that, that's really.
I know.
Yeah. I mean, I, I made a recommendation, and I said where the money could come from.
Right. You can tell them where I'm now, if you want, sure.
I think I separated it, that, that's still the one where it's together. Because at, at last week's meeting, we did take a vote on the bailiff, George, and.
Right.
This was for the administrative.
Yes, and so the next day, I, I, I separated those two proposals because we'd already agreed to one. And I kept the administrative support separate. So it was a little cleaner, actually, but I don't have the.
Did you mail it to us, and then just gone?
Yes, I did. When I sent you the executive summary.
It was in there.
I, I also included the, the, because I wasn't sure if I had sent it yet.
I read the executive, I read the.
We can do it next week, Mike, I just want to make sure that we, you know, don't, don't forget it.
Oh, yeah, no, 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 that's fine, okay.
Yeah, I mean, I just want to make sure it doesn't get lost.
Yeah, so if you need another one, though, the, a one, because it's a little, again, it's a little bit cleaner.
What did Mike say?
I would, I would not need it all.
Okay, that'll be good, yeah.
But I read your, um, the, the summary for the budget committee.
Yes.
But I don't remember, it was attached, I don't remember.
There were three attachments, one was the budget again, only because I had, I had taken from some of those sources the money for George's line and Ed's line.
Yeah.
And then, so I just sent you the, and then there was the executive summary notes, whatever. And then I reset this budget revision, because I split them apart, and I thought it was just easier to take them again. So I, I've got a note, I'll send them out.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. I just have another one, I think I lost it, but how many said that? Went right out of my head.
I'm here to tell you that, it doesn't get any better.
Oh, do.
All right, well, can I ask the committee input, what do you think?
You may.
Is any committee input?
I have so.
Yes.
Now, Ken went to the transfer station yesterday.
Sorry?
Ken, my husband, yeah. Recycled, and before going, he asked about, you know, the separation and stuff, and I said, I don't think anything's happened yet. And then he went and read what's written on the website about the transfer station. He said, boy, is that updated, it talks about the joys of.
Single story.
Single story.
Well, it's hard when you're in transition, yeah.
Yeah, but I would think that people should know that at least, you know, changes are coming.
We did see.
And we are separating glass, there's no, no mention of that anywhere. There's no town emails.
Not, not on the website? No? No? Where did I read it?
They may have put something at the transfer station.
No, there was a memo from the block that I saw. No, I didn't.
I saw something, they said something, but we are doing, we are starting to do glass, but everything else is still the same.
I saw, I'm, I'm, yeah.
Cardwood and, and glass. But I remember I saw it.
Well, he tried, he looked all over that, and then he looked at the emails that had come through, the town emails.
I mean, I don't know.
And he couldn't find it.
I might just.
Adlin, budget.
So when he went to the transfer station, he had to stop and pull out all the glass.
Yeah.
Changes at the transfer station on seven-ten, let's see what this is. If you've been paying attention, uh, please be aware, new traffic patterns, uh, each item, whether it be blah, 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 blah.
I think that was just letting people know.
Changes are coming.
That we're not sure what they're gonna be changes on.
Right, so I understand this is what it says, change at the transfer station, so.
Yeah, so I think that was it.
Yeah, and there's anything else?
I'll try to, I'll draw something. I'll have time tomorrow, I'll draw something, so put it on my news blog and, you know, just, I'll, I'll just.
Maybe you should talk with Ed about, you know, when changes come, let's communicate.
Yep. Okay, anything else? All right, that might consensus, we are done.
All right.
Again, thank you, board, for your help. Uh, sorry to be leaving you, uh, it's been, it's been a privilege, really, to help the town, so. I apologize. All right, we're done.
You will miss you soon, Sam.
Thank you for this.
You're welcome.
Is this a sleeve?
It is.
Wouldn't you know, it's the fourth, the fifth side.
I had to, I had to beg the woman over, I said, I got the same, I had to, I begged her to, uh, do a rush job tonight. I had already ordered it, haven't I? Last week. Hey, does your, my wife, did you pick up that? I don't even order it. She goes, well, you might want to get on that. Yeah.
Enjoy your week.
I thank you.
Such as it is, we're coming back tomorrow.
Well, no, I'm staying overnight, and I'm going home to go back tomorrow night, so.
It is okay, I don't know.
Yeah, yeah, I, my, um, I'm in the shower, and my fan stopped, and my lights went out, and I was like, and I thought I smelled smoke, so.
So you were actually there.
Yeah. And then I, I'm dealing here, and then I went home. And, um, so then, I was like, okay. So I got my, so I went through, and then the lights downstairs didn't work either, so I said, okay. I didn't smell smoke anymore, but I'm, I'm gonna qualify from.
Yeah.
Oh, my God, it was three engines. All these.
Listen, they were all there training, so, you know.
That's right, that's right, it's Monday. My husband is on the phone, and I'm talking to my son, he's like, he's up camp too, and he's in, and I was like, don't panic, it's okay. You want me to come home, I'll come home right now, I was like.
Ooh, I gotta get the camera.
Did you get my explanation on that?
Everybody knows now.